Good afternoon. I call to order the Hammond County Board of County Commissioners Regular Staff Meeting of August, of April the 22nd. Good afternoon, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We also have with us our Clerk of the Board and our County Administrator. So, welcome to them also.
Thank you.
I'm going to start as we always do with our silent prayer. I'd like to say normally I name people, and it's been every Thursday, just senseless murders. And so, I'm not going to do that because there have been so many tragedies within our county and outside our county. So, I would just ask that as you have your silent prayer, if you would include just the murderous spirit that is expanding throughout our land, throughout our county. So, if we could have a silent prayer, I appreciate it. Amen.
Amen.
And we'll have our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for approval of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And Bridget has informed me that we do have someone that would like to make a public comment. Do that now. Your comments are limited to two minutes. Thank you.
Mike, you are unmuted on my end. Mike, if you'd like to make a public comment, just unmute on your end. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I hear you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and good afternoon. The reason I'm jumping into the meeting here is this development at 4040 Walton Creek Road, CTR Development LLC. They're asking for some, I don't know, CRA today or CTA, whatever. This zone change was just approved by the Rural Zoning Commission, three to two. My concern is the flooding. I've lived in this neighborhood my whole life, and I've lived in Plainville area for 30 years. 2001, there was a flash flood event that flooded this parcel land. Ninety-seven, there was water on the land, and in 64, which I do remember, 1964, there was three to four foot of water on this property. And then 37, you can all be the judge. I think we need to maybe get the Army Corps of Engineers involved in this. This is a major, we're going to put, they're proposing 28 apartments to be on this property. I think we're putting people, it's the lowest piece of property, I believe, parcel in Plainville. If you look at the gas station on the corner of Walton Creek and Rooster Pike, and everybody's down the east side, it's raised up to the point where it's almost not functional. They had to do that to get it out of the flood zone. And this area, this parcel land is behind that Shell gas station, and it's extremely low. I don't know what, how they're going to mediate it, but I think we need to take a pause on this and maybe get the Army Corps of Engineers involved and do a flood study. I've lived in this area, I've been around, I've seen the 2001 flood was unbelievable. There's a creek, it's called Walton Creek. What happens is the Ohio River backs up, backs up to the lower Miami, and it backs up, and in 97, there was like 30 or 40 homes in Newtown flooded from this, which happens here. This is the lowest spot. I think we need to take a break from this, and let's, everybody calm down. And before we jump into this, let's make sure how this is going to be mediated and get the, maybe get the Army Corps of Engineers involved in it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. And I was just, I certainly appreciate you taking the time to give your comments. I was just wondering, have you given those comments anywhere else, either to the township or to any other input as they looked at public hearings?
No, I haven't. My impression. The township seems to be 100% pro-development, and I found it through the, as you know, with addressing you during the people report portion of this, I don't seem to be getting anywhere there, so I, you know. But they have the Rural Zoning Commission to vote three to two, and our representative on the Rural Zoning Commission to vote against it because he knows the area seems to tell everything we need to know about that. But it's being rezoned from residential, when the house was built in 1907, so it's kind of historical. The whole area is historical, it's called Plainville. I don't know if you've ever been on the east side, it's a little area. But no, I haven't.
Okay, thank you so much. Before I move on, are there any comments or questions by our Commissioners? Okay, I'll move on to our comments and motions. Vice President Commissioner Reese, you have any comments or questions?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. No question that relates to this issue.
Okay.
In terms of, are we moving to our regular comments?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to, certainly all of us, the whole world, watch this George Floyd incident, and a year later, as you know, diverse people from all over the world marching, it was intergenerational, people calling for justice. And there was a diverse jury and a trial process that came back with a conviction of murder, something that we all saw with our own eyes on tape. And so, just wanted to highlight while the work does continue, we saw even police officers that testified that it was wrong. You saw diverse jury come back with a unanimous decision, and certainly as we continue to move toward making sure that people are safe, but that also that there is equal justice. So, I wanted to comment on that, as well as, last week I participated in the no appointment for COVID-19, something that I've really been pushing, no appointments. It was looking forward to the walk-up opportunity. And so, last week it worked out really great at the Board of Elections, and I'm happy to hear that we are going to continue that effort where people can, you don't have to get an appointment, don't have to buy an appointment and go and walk up and get your COVID test, and certainly, I mean, COVID shot, and I'm encouraging people to do that as our board has done, continues to do. Also, I want to thank Judge Wendy Cross, I had a good meeting with her regarding a youth advocate program that deals with juvenile youth, trying to put them into employment opportunities as we approach the summer months, certainly what we're going to be looking at, summer jobs. And one of the things, as we put together our policy moving forward, that I'll get a chance to participate in now, one of the things I'm looking at is how do we have a youth division that's similar to CCY, but certainly with some of the new things that are available, and certainly not only this program, but a number of programs that would be focused on that. But I wanted to thank Judge Wendy Cross for bringing that program to our attention. Also, as we passed the resolution last week, Madam President, it obviously is Minority Health Month, and this Saturday, April 24th, Closing the Health Gap, hosts their annual minority health activity. It's going to look a little different this year, and focused, it will be focusing on the getting the shot. So, there will be availability to get the shot down at the Washington Park area this Saturday. And last but not least, certainly in these days and times when every day you get is a blessing, I'm happy that, and honored and blessed that this Sunday I will enjoy another birthday. I also, and one of the things that I wanted to do was with COVID, now people coming out a little bit more, we got to get moving. You survive COVID, but you got to, I got to work some of these pounds off too, and get in shape so we don't get hit with other things like diabetes, et cetera. So, this Sunday, white people come out, it's free from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the Hartwell Recreation Center. Just stop by, you can drive through, you're going to have a pop-up roller skating. Everybody knows I love to skate. If you want to skate, or if you just want to come out and line dance, or bring your lawn chair, or drive through, just to get moving, and we'll certainly have the CDC guideline. So, that's all I have, Madam President, for today.
Okay, thank you so much. And I'm excited about your birthday, you'll be close to us, getting closer.
I'm moving on up, I'm moving on up.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioner Drehouse.
Now, I know that Commissioner Reese is not as old as we are, Madam President, but she's, at least she's getting closer. Getting closer to that age. She's definitely the youthful one in the crowd. So, I just had just a couple of things related to the vaccine. So, you know, we've been talking now for a week or two about how easy it is to get the shot. So, we're encouraging everybody to take their shot, to get the shot. Everyone is within 10 minutes of a place that's administering the shot, whether it's a Kroger Pharmacy, or a Meyer, or the Board of Elections, or in the city somewhere, or you know, at FQAC, there are multitude of places administering the shot. And so, it's now been easier, it's easier than ever for those that have been waiting, they didn't want to get online, they didn't want to call 211, they just didn't want the trouble of it. We're, as Commissioner Reese said, we're doing appointments still, people can make appointments, but we're also doing walk-ups because we've got enough vaccine now where we can accommodate that. So, it's kind of the next phase of vaccine distribution. And so, there are a number of things going on. The health fair at Washington Park is one of them. There's another health fair happening on Saturday for Santa Maria out at the Price Hill Rec Center. They're also administering vaccine that runs from 10 to 3:00, so it's kind of a similar timeframe. And then we've got all kinds of, I've got a whole list of places that are doing shots over the weekend, in addition to what we do, you know, during the week. So, testandprotectcincy.com has a listing of all of what's going on. So, I encourage people, whether you want to make an appointment or just walk up to get your shot, go there and you'll see this very long list of providers and who's doing that, very accessible to everybody. And then, just want to note also that on Sunday, the Cincinnati Health Department is going to do a vaccine clinic down at Paul Brown Stadium. Obviously, the county is a partner in that because Paul Brown Stadium is owned by the taxpayers in Hamilton County. And so, I joined the mayor this morning talking about that opportunity that will exist, there will be free parking in a lot that's to the south of the building, and then the entrance will be at the south of the building. You just walk right up, they've got 5,000 doses available. I think they've filled about 1,000 so far, so there's lots and lots of opportunity there too. And then the Urban League is also distributing vaccine on Sunday from 11:00 to 2:00, and those are walk-ups too. So, like I said, there's just a multitude, and so we really want to make sure that everybody knows about the opportunity. And Madam President, just as a little bit of a shout out to your Chief of Staff, who came on the briefing yesterday and talked about his experience, I don't think people realized how sick the Bishop Bobby Hilton was, and his wife also had COVID. And he attributes some of, you know, not having had the shot to a little bit of hesitancy on his part, and he got very, very sick and had to be hospitalized, and he has to carry oxygen with him now for the next few months. So, it was really a powerful story, and now, of course, he's been vaccinated because he believes deeply that not only should he get the vaccine, but everybody else should get the vaccine. So, it was really, thank you for, I know, encouraging him to do that, it was really something. And then we had a young woman on who just got it so she can see her parents who are immunocompromised. And then we had Tropicana from 101.1 to talk about her experience and how easy it was to drive into a place, get a shot, wait for 15 minutes in your car, work on your phone because they had Wi-Fi, and leave. So, these stories abound, but I guess I just want to emphasize to folks, it's easy, it's accessible, so everybody needs to take the shot to get the shot. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. And I'm taking notes as both of you have talked, and it's all over the place, so we'll forget about the notes, but I just want to say the walk-ups were, was just a great idea. I mean, that was a hindrance for a lot of people. And I had also encouraged Greg to look at Sharonville Convention Center, that's more out this way for people that don't necessarily, for the mass vaccinations, don't want to go to Duke Energy. So, vaccinations are taking place at Sharonville Convention Center. I also wanted to say, as you talk about Bishop Hilton's testimony, I told him yesterday, I said, "So, we're getting to 80% by July the 4th, so you can take credit when we get up to that 80." You can take a little bit of credit that, well, if the pastor do it, maybe I'll do it. So, that was just a jab. But I'm sure as we look at who can influence and other people to take the vaccination, I'm sure that his testimony had a lot to do. And Tim McCarthy, I'm trying to get, oh, he's on now, and I'm not sure, so he can tell me, we have thought about having him on the 27th, our staff meeting, to talk about the JAH program for youth that we're trying to start the first part of June. And so, we'll just, Tim, are you able to speak to whether or not you were able to be there that quickly for your, for our staff meeting?
Yes, Madam President. We could, I honestly think it would be better if we did the first because we just got the proposals back last Friday, and they're being waited through. So, if we had one more week, we would do that. And also, one of the people that I think really ought to be on that call is in an all-day training that day, wouldn't be able to be there. So, if we could do it the following week, that would be, that would be great.
Okay.
We're really excited about it because, you know, last year was such a train wreck as it relates to youth employment and those sorts of things, that we're really excited about having this again this year.
Yeah, I have no problem with waiting till the other person can be involved. Do you guys have any problem with waiting for a full package on the next week? Yes. Okay, good, good. And was it you, Tim? I've been on so many Zoom calls, but somebody said about the youth, they've lost a year, and we've all lost a year, but as far as their relationship with their peers and going to school, and so this will hopefully push them forward with some optimism for the future. And I can remember a professor saying about, "If you want to cure the problem of violence, put in some jobs allowed." That's not the only cure, but if people have, young people and older people have something to do, and they can feel good about themselves, and purchase some things, and boost the economy, that violence will go down a little bit because they have things to do, they got to get to work. So, I'm just really excited. I know all of you are excited about the opportunity for our youths to have a program where they can work. And lastly, I also had to speak to the George Floyd trial, what happened, and I want to speak not as the President of the Board, and really not as a black person, or not as a black woman, but as a human being, that definitely this verdict was appropriate, in my opinion, and anybody who's human, I believe, would see that no one should be treated in that way. So, it's a human thing for me, and that was my last comment. Okay. Not devoid of the fact that I am a black woman, and I am a black person, but anybody, I don't care what color you are, in my opinion, should see that you just don't treat people that way. Okay. So, I'm going to move on to Jeff Ludo, our County Administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. One by leave, one comment, and then one by leave item today, just the comment, just to keep the Board apprised, we are into the process of conducting stakeholder meetings related to the ultimate, an ultimate recommendation to the Board on American Rescue Plan dollars. I'm working with Commissioner Summer Dumas's office to schedule an update on this at this coming Tuesday's staff meeting, and likely at the subsequent staff meetings from there. I just want to make sure that we are keeping the Board not only apprised on a real-time basis of what we're hearing through the stakeholder process, but also, as I know that you all are receiving outreach and continuing to deliberate on how we go about utilizing these dollars to make sure that we are in real-time weaving in the Board's policy guidance into the process as well. So, I look forward to that being on as a staff meeting item for discussion on Tuesday.
Madam President, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Jeff, do we have dates yet for public hearings, or a timeframe for public hearings?
We do not yet. We initially wanted to get this done in just a couple of stakeholder meetings, but we have expanded the circle of stakeholders, which has caused us to expand the number of meetings. So, we're not yet at the point where we know when those stakeholder meetings will conclude, so we can't really yet forecast when we would move to the public hearing process. The initial plan was to do that towards the end of May. Still hoping to shoot for that, but just wanted to provide ourselves with a little bit of wiggle room, given the fact that we want to make sure that we're as inclusive as possible with our stakeholders.
And that's another reason why I made sure that Bishop Hilton gave Jeff our summer schedule, things would not be scheduled while we're on our summer recess, but of course, the majority of the recess will be there before the majority of recess starts, but I want him to know when we would be out, so.
Yeah, and I would hope that we could do, the summer's going to be challenging for people, I think, to participate, so hopefully we'll get that done in May.
Oh, yeah.
That was the rationale for trying to get it wrapped up in May, so that even if the Board needed a little bit more time to put its final stamp on a plan, the Board does go on summer session, but we are still meeting over the summer, so.
Absolutely.
An opportunity for work to get done, but to get the public aspect of it taken care of before summer session would certainly be ideal.
Right. Summer session starts at the end of May, but preferably, okay, we'll, I'm sure we'll have our meetings before then. Okay. I apologize, I just left, I apologize a little bit, not a lot, but I just left a church session a minute ago, and so it's kind of still in me. Okay. All right, let's move forward, you have a by leave.
Yeah, one by leave, and this actually relates to the annexation that the Board referred to the County Engineer last week in its meeting. This is an affidavit of, references by leave number one in your packet, this is the affidavit of service by the agent of the Clerk of Council, and the Council of the City of Madera, and the Clerk of the Township of Columbia, and adjoining property owners of the filing of petition for annexation of 1.608 acres of land from Columbia Township to the City of Madera. This is just informing these various parties that the notification procedures identified in the Ohio Revised Code have taken place within the appropriate period of time. I believe Clerk Paniotto, the Board's action today is just receiving this for the record, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. So, the Administration does recommend receiving this for the record.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments, Vice President Reese?
Yeah.
No. Commissioner Drehouse?
No questions.
I make a motion to receive for the record.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to our regular agenda items.
Thank you, Madam President. Two items right at the top of your agenda from the Administration. The first is a resolution authorizing the Award of ITB 011-21 related to the painting of structural steel within the East Garage, East Riverfront Garage. The East Riverfront Garage, for folks who may be watching at home, is the garage that is just east of Heritage Bank Arena, also by definition east of Great American Ballpark as well. The garage is over 20 years old, so the structural steel within the garage needs to be coated and painted. This is a part, this is the second year of a two-year painting operation. Last year's operation was roughly 129,000. We received some very aggressive pricing this year for the second year of the program, which on your agenda shows is 109,000 to Brand Safeway Solutions LLC. The Administration recommends approval.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions or comments, Vice President Reese?
No questions.
Commissioner Drehouse? I make a motion to adopt item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Item two?
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number two is the extension of our declaration of a state of emergency due to COVID-19. This is really an ministerial and administrative action that we have taken since the start of the pandemic to extend our ability to take advantage of efficiencies, procurement efficiencies, and to be reimbursed from FEMA if, should we desire at a later date. This is one of the prerequisites in order to, for those actions. But before I go any further, Nick Crossley, our EMA Director, is on, and I just asked Nick to say a few words about the necessity administratively of having this particular declaration in place, and specifically, Nick, if you could touch on the fact that this really is separate from the regulatory prohibitions, the, you know, Governors' recommendations and mandates, Public Health Department mandates, those types of things. So, if you could just speak to the functionality of this particular declaration of emergency for the county.
Yeah, so, again, I think the verbiage in, and thank you for allowing me to speak for just a minute, Commissioners. I think the verbiage in the resolution says that we are still experiencing an emergency in Hamilton County, which we are. Obviously, our numbers, our COVID numbers are steady, not declining over the last couple weeks. In addition, as Administrator Ludo mentioned, it puts, it lets our communities know that we're still operating in this form, it lets the state know that we still have issues in Hamilton County, and it also streamlines some administrative procedures to make in case we have to make any emergency, quick action that we can do that. So, again, also, the federal government still has a declared emergency, the state of Ohio still has a declared emergency, and so we're just in line with that as well. And this is what basically the guidance I give to all of our communities as we move forward. So, again, administrative in nature, but it does put the state on notice, we still have the ability to request assistance from the state and the federal government, and it lets them know that we still believe we're in, we're still dealing with this issue, so we haven't gotten past it.
Thank you so much. This is pretty straightforward, and we do this about every three months or so since this has happened. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, certainly we're in compliance, and this helps us with being able to, you know, get reimbursement for things that we're doing as it relates to COVID, allows us some additional ways in which we can get things done a little quicker as it relates to COVID. But I do want to make sure if people understand those of who are out here with small businesses that are open, does not affect them from, the regular guidelines are in place, it does not affect people who are outside, although it was snowing yesterday, we got a crazy weather, but sun is coming out, people are out walking and doing it responsibly. I just wanted to make sure, because sometimes people think, "Oh, my gosh, now I got to close my business again." That is not what this does. This just allows us as a county to get the tools that we need to be able to help with COVID, whether it's, you know, doses, or equipment, or anything that deals with economic relief that we have out here to help people with rental assistance and those kind of things. So, I just wanted to make sure that was highlighted, so that we don't get calls from small businesses, say, "Oh, my God, I got to shut down." So, anyway, just wanted to say that we're still under those guidelines, and I know we've got graduations coming up, and they've got different things in place where people still can have graduations, they can still have proms, and do it in, you know, based on the regulations.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Commissioner Drehouse?
No, no comments.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt item two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. Okay, item number three, Engineer Office, Eric Beck, there he is.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Item number three is a resolution authorizing a joint agreement between Hamilton County and the City of Harrison for the maintenance of West Road at Corner Brook Road. This is part of the Ohio Revised Code requirement for an annexation. The Board received the request last year, we still haven't finalized that, but road maintenance for the annexed area is an ORC requirement. road maintenance for the annexed area is, is an RRC requirement. And this is just for a sliver of road that is currently maintained by the county at the corner of West Road in Corner Brook, which will turn over the maintenance responsibility to the city of Harrison once the annexation happens.
Thank you. Any, any questions or comments?
I just wanted to clarify that the resolution that will approve that annexation, since this maintenance agreement is now in place, the next agenda of the board on, on May 6.
Okay.
Okay.
So we don't have to take any action on it?
Not right now. You can adopt this maintenance agreement, but I just wanted to let you know that the approval of this annexation-related document will be on the next agenda of the board.
And I remember May 6, that's my birthday. So that'll be the top of my mind on my birthdays. Okay, all right, item four.
Item four is resolution for the alteration of a limited access right of way, creating a single access point on Blue Rock Road in Colrain Township. The right of way along Blue Rock Road is unique. It's called limited access, which means the property owner can't put driveways through it without the board may changing that right of way to, to standard right of way. We have worked with the developer. I've been working with them for probably 10 years off and on on this project. They've submitted traffic impact studies, and what this will allow is a driveway access to their parcel at an existing three-legged intersection that has a traffic signal. Once the development goes in, there'll be pavement modifications and signal modifications that will be the responsibility of the developer. So it should have no negative impact on, on the county roadway or the county right of way.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? I had a couple of questions, and Eric has already answered those for me previously, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt item four.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Madam President, you do need to adopt three. I was just explaining that the approval will be coming before you for the annexation. This is a maintenance. I'm sorry. I didn't.
Oh, that's okay.
I didn't mean to confuse the issue.
Oh, I'll hold it against you, so.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, so we approved item four, so I, I'd like to just go back up to item three. We've heard the explanation and clarification on item three. I'd like to make a motion to adopt item three.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is a resolution authorizing a First Amendment to a consultant agreement with Strand Associates for Field Zerro Road and Conray Intersection, Project 501-707. This is an increase in the contract of $76,350. This is pretty standard on how we do our design work. Preliminary design was done. This amendment is for the associated right of way plans and right of way descriptions for the project. The cost will be split three ways on this between county engineer, city of Sharonville, and Sycamore Township.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I just comment that it's always nice when the cost is split in, in three ways or two ways, so appreciate that, that they're working with us on this agreement. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt item five.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
All righty, thank you, Eric. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. You stayed on long enough for that, then the we'll move on to item six, which is HC, HCDC. Hi, Harry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hello to you, and thank you very much for your time today.
Yeah, Clint and Mel, yeah, hello.
Thank you. As you know, on Tuesday, we presented a CRA agreement for your consideration today, and this agreement is with CTR Development in Columbia Township. It's for a 27-unit apartment complex with an investment of about $3.4 million. The agreement is being proposed at 50% for 15 years. And I do believe we have someone on the line from the Hamline County Stormwater District who can address the concerns of the resident who spoke in the public comments. So I would open the floor to, I believe it's Mohammed Islam, who might be able to address the concerns.
Mohammed, are you on?
Yeah.
Yes, I think there were some, there were.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, yes, thank you. So this particular property, the concern that the resident raised that it's in the flood zone and the stormwater issues, those are two concerns is raised. This property is in the flood area, but in Hamline County, we do have Hamline County flood regulations. So when they apply for a permit to our department, they have to go through through that process to be in compliance with the flood regulation. And they have to bring the property above the flood, base flood elevation, so that property does not flood. So that, that will be the flood. And for the stormwater issue, we also have a stormwater regulation that we will make sure they they are in compliance with the county's stormwater regulation. What that means is they have to provide detention. Any runoff they generate from their hard surface, they have to capture it and then release it slowly in a controlled way so that they don't flood downstream property owners. So we have, we have only seen the concept of plan of this property. They have not applied for a permit. They will apply for a permit when they apply for a building permit, and then we will review those things and make sure that they are implemented in the field.
Okay, thank you very much. Any additional information, Harry, we need to hear?
I believe that's it unless Mel from Columbia Township wants to say anything.
No, I wanted to say hello again, Commissioners, and thank you for considering this partnership. We, we are really excited about this project. This is the first new housing development in eastern Columbia Township in more than three decades. And if you leave Cincinnati on Columbia Parkway, it becomes Loester Pike. You can go directly to this site. And you can do it on Metro if you would like. The site is fully served by several Metro stops. We struggle to attract families who cannot afford single family or who single family isn't a fit for a point in their life. And 90% of our housing stock is single family. So the opportunity to attract a small-scale, low-density housing developer to do a beautiful project in this area is something our comp plan has called for for more than a decade, and we've been unable to attract other developers to do it because the project is so small, the economy of scale doesn't work. But we have a family builder who happens to live in a neighboring community who wants to invest in this community, and we would like to support this and provide more options for our residents. So we appreciate the opportunity for this partnership to reinvest in our community.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Reese, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Drehouse?
No, I don't. I appreciate the conversation in our previous meeting, and thank you for the information today also related to stormwater.
Thank you, and I appreciate the resident who called in because then now we have more clarity on those issues that were presented, so we thank him also. I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number six.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
We appreciate you. Thank you.
Hey, we will move on with our consent agenda items. Before we move forward with those, just like to do a brief summary, our consent agenda items include the sheriff who is, wants to replace a bus and a Ford Explorer, and also a Jeep replacement by the Environmental Services and accepting a purchase order from Justice Solutions. The ones that we want to accept for the record is a financial transaction for the month that ended 3/31 from the treasurer. And, let me see. A bid awards and contracts authorized by the purchasing department for the month of March. So I'll open it up for any questions or comments.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I have a comment or want to bring attention to item number eight. Purchasing department, and certainly we have been, I guess a couple of weeks ago, we had a presentation on equity and looking at these contracts and making sure we have inclusion and how do we improve on it. I just wanted to bring attention, I know that item number eight, the purchasing paperwork that was presented to us also references a December 27, 2000 resolution that gives the administrator the authority to move forward with these items. And I'd like to see that, maybe, Jackie, I'd like to see that it wasn't around in 2000, just so I have a better understanding of what that resolution was. And second, in the purchasing, there was, there is an item in Juvenile Court around Airmark, and we were, I think we brought up Airmark during the reentry presentation that we had on Tuesday. But I wanted to, I understand that there is a, and maybe Jeff can talk to this, there is a a contract that's out for the food service for Juvenile Court. And I just wanted to highlight in the corrective action, one of the things that I think is important, and I think we kind of brought up, was that as we're looking at these contracts that go through procurement contracts or even in HR hiring, to make sure that we're diversifying the decision-making boards. There's a board of people that make the decision on, you know, the RFP, who gets the award, and I just wanted to make sure, drawing attention to this, as this one is just a continuation for, I think, an additional month of about $64,000, but they're going to be going out for a larger bid. And just wanted to make sure that these contracts, these bids, and during that process, that there's diversity on the decision-making boards who, who rank them, who rate them, who make the decision on this is a good, a good contract or a good fit as we move forward. And we found that that had not been the case all the time in the past, if at all in the past. So just wanted to highlight those two things for this as we move forward on how we can do things, you know, even better. So just wanted to highlight those things.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Drehouse?
No, I have no comments.
Okay, thank you. So with that being said, excuse me. We, as far as adoption, I have, I'd like to make a motion to adopt items nine, 10, 11, and 12, and except for the record, items seven and eight.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. That's it for our agenda. I'd like to open it up. If there are any additional questions or comments that our Commissioners would like, Vice President Reese?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I failed to also mention that I had the honor to participate in the Ohio Realtist Conference. These are the African-American Realtor and real estate brokers from around the state. It was a really good conference. The topic was estate of black homeownership. And there were two things that were brought up, and they had people from all over the state. It seems to be the same issue, obviously, affordable housing, but also the issue of land banks and having African-American, most of these properties are African-American neighborhoods, and the interest in having a land bank or a portion of the land bank that could be for African-American redevelopment, and that's something that I'm looking into and just wanted to put that early on the table, but that's one of the issues that I am looking into and have been looking into for some time. The other issue is, as we talk about the affordable, looking at a lot of the, there was a push for homeownership, and that was the source of wealth for African-Americans that they could pass down. There was the issues with many people losing that grandma not able to, when grandma died, the house can't go to the children because they're overloaded with tax burdens, and they usually lose the property and doesn't, it doesn't get passed down or able to be used as something that they can borrow again. So they brought out some good issues. They gave us, they're going to be putting together, I believe, a document, and once I get there, we'll be happy to share it with us as we're looking at our housing plan from a, from a countywide perspective. So they have some good things. They have a trust in Columbus that they're doing that we might want to look at. So I'm excited to get their proposal and be able to share it with, with the board and the administration as we move forward and make sure that everyone has an opportunity to afford, be afforded the opportunity to live here in Hamilton County.
Okay, thank you. And the Board of Realtors, we're still in need of a volunteer, well, not a volunteer, we need a person on our Board of Revision. And so it is a paid position. And if they're interested, they can get online on our website and fill out an application, because I need two more from my office to represent my office. So if you could just share that, that would be great. So thank you so much. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that, with the group being formed here within the next couple of months, might be, they have a member of the Realtors on, on that committee, Jeff, to talk about housing as we continue to think through, you know, housing, it's affordable housing, it's recovery housing, it's, you know, there, there are a lot of different versions of what we need to look at when it comes to housing that's made available to people in the community. So the Board of Realtors is the other one. There are two different groups, but the Board of Realtors might want a seat at that table, too. So just continuing to think through who would be most appropriate to sit there, and so the administration can think through some of that as well. So, and I, I did comment on George Floyd the other day, but I, both of you brought it up, and I do, too, want to weigh in and say, you know, justice was served. We have a long way to go, obviously, in every community in the country, but justice was served at least in that case. And, you know, I think we all need to participate in the healing of this community and others as we move forward. It's just, it's such a challenging time. So I just did want to, you know, weigh in on that as well, and, you know, and continue to work towards justice for everybody in Hamilton County and elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with no other comments, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.